Together to from the council speak Corey Johnson. They've pushed a plans for what they feel be necessary. We have speaker presumably speaker from the other side or from professor who wishes to speak to us. And we'll take it from there.
Excuse me, before he speaks.
Before we go Caroline, now at this point after the presentation, is there going to be a vote from the committee?
Um, this wasn't set up as a committee meeting, so I think if there's a vote, it will have to happen in a committee meeting.
Okay, all right, so we'll just go ahead with the presentation.
Excuse me, before we start, could everybody just mute themselves? There's some ambient noise and it's distracting. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Angotti, the floor is yours.
Okay, hi, my name is Tom Angotti. I'm an urban planner, professor emeritus of urban policy and planning at Hunter College and the Graduate Center of CUNY. I have been an urban planner for decades. I did a stint as a senior planner with the New York City Department of City Planning. And with the Housing Preservation and Development Agency for a couple of years. And I've been a longtime activist planner. Working with communities around the city to develop their own plans. I know some of you may recall, I was involved in the Atlantic Yards Battles many years ago. Also, the Brooklyn Waterfront. I was the chief planner for the Red Hook Community Plan and for several others. So when I saw, I'm going to talk about the city council's proposal for comprehensive planning. When I saw the city council proposal. At the beginning, when I first saw that it was there, I said, wow, this is terrific. I've been calling for comprehensive planning forever, including during the years that I worked in the city planning department and that I taught city planning. We need comprehensive planning, citywide, long-term planning. And the Department of City Planning. Unfortunately, doesn't really do it. It does zoning. And zoning is a very limited tool for developing long-term strategies. For services, for land use, for budget. And for meeting the many problems and issues that we have as citizens. So I said, I started clapping, wonderful. The city council is finally doing what I've been talking about for decades. But then, when I got under the covers. With it, I saw that it was only top-down planning. So that's my main problem with it. It's all top-down and there's no bottom-up. There's no community planning. And that's sort of the fundamental problem with it. It's got a lot of other problems. A lot of other things that are excluded. But it follows too much the history of negating the work that community boards do, that community planners do, that activists do in bringing their proposals for long-term change forward before government. And so. Another problem with it is it's really growth-oriented. The proposal, it proposes that the citywide planners develop three alternative scenarios and they take them to the community boards. And so you get to discuss these three scenarios. One would be a low-growth scenario, another would be a high-growth scenario. And then there'd be something in the middle. There are two problems with this. One is growth isn't the only thing that people care about. That isn't the only thing that we have to plan for. We also have to plan for the quality of the environment, for services, for a whole host of things that could very well occur if we don't do planning, environmental in particular, and now confronting climate change. Three growth scenarios don't quite capture the need for long-term planning. Infrastructure, for example. So. The other problem is that the community boards are continue in their role as being the last stop in the planning process. And not the first stop. So you get these three scenarios and it almost seems like a classroom setup that I would do for my students, for example. You've got one scenario on this side, another scenario on that side, and then you've got one in the middle. And the trick is, it always seems to be the most moderate one and a compromise. So you want people to move towards that middle. But the problem is that you, the planners, sitting in an office in the mayor's office, basically. Get to decide what those three scenarios are and do it on the basis of the compromise that they want you to buy. So. Another problem is there's nothing about budgeting here. So we have annual budget hearings in each of the boroughs. But the capital budget is where a good deal of the long-term planning occurs. Where is it here? It's not in the formula. Another problem is with the environmental review. The legislation claims that the central office will do an environmental impact analysis. And that when the strategy that's selected is passed, it will incorporate that environmental analysis. And what that means is that by the time the communities get to see it. The environmental analysis has already been done. And when it comes time to approve the projects. The development that's going to result from the chosen scenario. The city planning department in doing a rezoning, all they have to do is refer to the generic environmental impact analysis that had been done for the 10-year plan. And what that will mean is that you won't get to see the specific environmental impact analysis because there won't be one. It will, they will simply refer to the generic analysis that gets done every 10 years. So while there are a lot of flaws in the environmental review process. One of the flaws is, is not that communities don't get the information in a timely way and get to weigh in on new development. So. I think, I think the better alternative would be. Well, I guess before I go on to the community. Why a 10-year plan? Why not a 50-year plan? Why not look at different time horizons? You know. The best planned system we have in New York City is the water supply. And it's, it's the, it's done on a long-term basis. Planning for the water system started long before the city planning department was created. And we have one of the best water supply systems in the country, in the world. Because of this long-term plan, we have a 100-year plan to replace and improve the water infrastructure. Also, one of the greatest secrets that New York City keeps is that it does more land use planning upstate by the reservoirs than it does within the city limits. Why? To preserve the quality of the water. You don't hear about that. The city pays planners to actually do comprehensive plans upstate. So there's a lot of learning that we can do here inside the city from the planning that has occurred in that particular instance. So I think the missed opportunity is to flesh out a bottom-up process. So that there can be a top-down and a bottom-up process that meet. And don't always agree with each other and don't always have to agree with each other. But it's that dialogue and discussion and debate that is at the heart of getting to the problems that we need to solve over the long term. And. So one of the solutions needs to be to fund community-based planning through community boards. If you check out the revisions to the charter that were made in 1989. Inserted was a requirement that community boards hire a planner, that every community board have a planner. I know some of us testified in favor of that and we supported it. And we thought it was a positive step forward. But very soon after that, the legal counsel for the city planning department interpreted the charter change as meaning that city planning department or any other part of city government would make a planner available to advise community boards upon request. Well, that isn't good enough. If you, if you're going to look at a 1,000-page environmental impact statement. You don't call in the planners who have already reviewed it in the city planning department. And who look at it through a whole different lens. We need people who look at it through the lens of the community and raise questions. And so. So I think the part of the bottom-up repair to this legislation is to empower community boards to do what the charter says they can and should do, which is long-term planning. Not just reacting to every single Ulope action that comes before you. But being able to chart out long-term strategies and engage in a dialogue, a discussion, a debate with the agencies of city government and the mayor's office and the city council about those. Because when it comes to communities, the community boards have an important voice in the process. So this, this proposal, as it stands now does not include them, except as listeners in a review process that has pretty much been predetermined in the three strategies, the three scenarios. And and that's not good enough to have a real discussion and debate. Now, just finally, I would say you will hear those who, who will say that involving community boards is going to give fuel to the not-in-my-backyard, NIMBY exclusionary forces. And that is a real, I think, a real misunderstanding, misinterpretation and mischaracterization of the community boards. Because they can be NIMBY, but they can also be quite inclusionary. They can be anything. And what I learned from working in city government over the years is you'll get the same sentiments from people in city planning. And in the city council and in the mayor's office. So just because you happen to be at the local level doesn't make you more or less intolerant or exclusionary. And that's the bias that has to be overcome in City Hall. And I'm, I'm, I guess the final joke here is that the Department of City Planning has put itself on record as formally opposing the legislation that was proposed. I actually spoke at one of the recent charter revision sessions. The same one that the head of the city planning department and others from city government all came out in opposition to long-term planning. And so the, the final joke here is that the city planning department is opposed to this. And you have to ask why? Is this a play to take city long-term planning out of the jurisdiction of the city planning department and put it in the mayor's office? Perhaps that comes from the fact that the mayor's office now has an office of long-term planning and resiliency. And the city planning department doesn't participate. But mayors are term limited. And they come and go. And those central planning offices can can do some good things. But they can also fall down. The Long-Term Sustainability Plan, the Resiliency Plan were perhaps good starts. But they're sorely lacking when it comes to integration throughout government. And over the long term, they're actually quite short-term. If you really look at them in the long span of history. When it comes to sea level rise and climate change, it takes more than a 10-year plan. We have to look 50 years and beyond because sea level is rising at an unpredictable level. So that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. And I'm glad that I've been invited to speak to many community boards and that there's a great deal of interest in this. And hopefully, I hope that it does spark interest in long-term planning and doing it right.
Okay, thank you Professor Angotti. It was most helpful to give us a perspective as to what we should be looking at. So I think the biggest thing, I think takeaway is that what are, not only as a boards, but as people involved in planning, that we should really be looking at longer goals, even if it's past our lifetimes if necessary. And past the few years that we have here on the community board, that we should be looking at further. What are the further future goals that we should be looking at for the city and for our neighborhoods?
Mr. Gordon, what are you ready for from board members?
Yes, I just wanted to make a little statement and now go ahead, Mr. Do.
Welcome to Community Board 2, where we had a major rezoning in 2004. And we were told at that time that we would get a split of residential and commercial buildings. We were told that we'd get all of our ADA train subway stations made ADA compliant. We were told we were going to get an underground parking garage to take care of all of the public agency cars that are parked on our sidewalks in Community Board 2. Here we are in 2021 and we have gotten none of those things. They're not budgeted, they're not discussed by anyone in the city. The city has had enough turnover that the folks who are currently in charge don't even know what the city promised us years ago. We are term limited, so we don't even know we're not going to be around to see anything like that happen. But we have a whole series of issues and when he did not consult with community board 2. So the issues that we have been confronting for at least the last 20 years have not been addressed. I don't see how the plan that he's put forward is going to do a better job of that. Besides which, any 10-year old, 10-year plan is absent of flexibility. So the folks that are responsible for carrying it out may or may not be there or may have a different interpretation of what is expected today. So this whole plan, and I did watch the city.gov meeting where the council members reacted to this plan. And I can share with you that most of the council members were absolutely opposed to it. And the council members who participated in it were not actively supporting what was being presented. And Speaker Johnson was very uncomfortable based on the reaction he got from the council members. This plan is absent any sensitivity from the community. Ergo, it can't go forward. That's enough for right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Do. Are there any other members of the, of our committee? Mark Lynn-Use or members of the board who wish to also have any questions or comments as to Professor Angotti's statements?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Daughtry.
Okay, thank you Professor for your synopsis and good points. I wondered if you had any more thoughts regarding how we can build up community boards to take on this more active and long-term role? And sort of a subset to that question is, how do we do that given the new term limits and the turnovers that community boards now face?
Well, I think one of the first things is staffing and funding. It really, you know, the population of the average community board is somewhere over 100,000 to 150,000. Most, the majority of community boards are larger than all but three cities in the state of New York. And they don't have more than a district manager, assistant district manager office help. National staff. The community board members vary in their preparation and training, but that should be an ongoing part of the on a community board. It's not. It's my office has been in charge of doing, a little bit gets done. And I personally don't think term limits is the answer to anything. Either for elected officials or for community boards. My experience with working with community boards all over the city has been there are some long-term members who are gold mines of information and knowledge. And there are some long-term members that are just filling up space, but by and large, they're very valuable. Because they incorporate a great deal of learning and knowledge, much of which has been done through practice. By the same token, there needs to be greater diversity throughout our community board. In, 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 in the community boards, this varies enormously throughout this. Some community boards are quite diverse by age, by ethnicity, by race and gender. But some community boards are not. So there need to be standards and there needs to be some, but I think funding is fundamental. Why? And excuse me if I'm being heretical here, but why do borough president's office, offices have such deep funding when community boards get very little? And have to depend on borough president appointees? So I think the long-term charter change that needs to take place that didn't take place in 1989 was to downsize borough presidents or eliminate them entirely. And let communities be communities and engage with a citywide, long-term strategy on their own terms. And you won't win on some issues, but you'd be engaged. And I think that's, that's what, that's the kind of that's the kind of change that needs to happen. Community boards just have to have the staff. And the long-term memory that very often central agencies have, although often they don't.
Well, I will also share that as a result, to a certain extent of city planning, lack of planning. We have upwards of 100,000 homeless folks in the city of New York. Many of whom are on the streets of downtown Brooklyn. Some of the hotels that have been built downtown Brooklyn have been converted to homeless shelters. That's not in the speaker's plan. What's supposed to happen with 100,000 folk? At some point in the past, we had a series of what were called SRO, single-room occupancy hotels. You don't hear about them coming onboard in any extent today. But you have the same group of people that need to be housed. There is nowhere convenient today for those people to go and there are no plans to accommodate. And there are no plans to accommodate those folks. So you can go right down to Flatbush Avenue and to Calve Avenue, and there are homeless encampments next to buildings that are brand-new, folks making in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's not discussed in this plan at all. The speaker did not come to Community Board Two to understand the issues that we feel are important to be addressed. This plan does nothing for it. I'm going to say that every, every time I speak.
I would just add a footnote. I agree. I think housing policy suffers from the same shortightedness as land use policy. It's all about growing the numbers of housing units. Some affordable. Affordable to who? But some affordable, but the majority of them responding to a market and benefiting from deep subsidies, including tax benefits. So there really needs to be a long-term housing strategy. And that's also why communities need to be engaged in it. Because some communities should not be able to say, we don't want to take, take responsibility within our community board for addressing housing problems, while others say, okay, we'll take some shelters. And, and let everybody else take some shelters. In other words, this is, there's this really uncivic dynamic that goes on around the city. And the elected officials kind of reinforce it by being for or against, but never in the interest of long-term solving the housing problem. Not by necessarily just building more housing, because that's never done, that's never done it. As, as the number of housing units increase, well, Community Board Two would be a perfect example. It, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for homelessness, for people who don't have a roof over their heads because they can't even afford the so-called affordable housing.
Professor, I am recommending that we take the word affordable housing out of every document because it is a meaningless term. It is meant to lead people into the belief that the housing that's being produced is affordable in their community. That term needs to be replaced with something like community affordable housing or something that better describes the cost of housing in the respective community. We cannot deal with AMA, which is comprised of housing in Westchester and Long Island. And the number that is bandied about is $90,000 AMI. So we're working on a percentage of AMI for a lot of our communities that is not reflective of the rents that are currently being charged in these communities. That's very apparent here in Brooklyn. We need to get rid of affordable housing from every document and replace it with something that reflects the respective communities that it's going to be applied to.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other, well, I'll just throw one thing out to Professor Ngadi. And then we'll, it's interesting on the, you know, what you feel about the role of our presidents. Since you have been around even much longer than I have, I think you remember the old Board of Estimate, Professor, which did have the bar of presidents and the mayor, and I think was then the city, I forget the other one. The other one, the city council, whatever, not the city council, but the, there's another person that was involved in it. And then got rid of the Board of Estimates.
The control.
Yeah, the control, that's a controller, and I think there was the, was another one. But you know what I'm talking about. And one thing that was interesting is that now when they got rid of it, although I think that the bar of presidents is still there in kind of an amorphous role. And I don't know if the bar of presidents will take kindly to losing their positions or powers or discretions by your plan. Well, I wouldn't call it a plan, but by your suggestion.
I'm sure they won't.
Yes, yes. All right. Are there any other comments from other members?
Mr. Gordon.
I have another question.
That we were told that this plan would cost $45 million over 10 years. That's what we were told.
Yeah, I have it somewhere in my notes also. I don't know the exact amount offhand, but probably.
A ridiculous amount. What is that based on? Is that just staff? Is that staff and officers? There is no money in there to help the communities do what this plan is asking for. So that piece of it was never discussed. What does it mean? What does that $45 million mean to the respective community?
Well, not to defend Speaker Johnson, but my, if I recall, is that the monies would be used, spread out over time for the purpose of this special mayor's office that they would have for planning, you know, for planning, if I recall correctly. Again, I have it in my note. I don't have it. I can't put my finger on it for the moment. But that was one of the things that they came up with, that this would enable a more efficient planning. That was their, that is what their proposal was. Again, I'm not here to defend it, but I will state that that's why they put the money aside. They feel that this would enable a more efficient, I guess, planning between all the agencies. Because what they were claiming was that you have so many different agencies making planning and none of it was coordinated, that the 40, but the millions that would be set aside would, will. Again, I cannot, I'm not going to defend it. I'm not here to push it. I'm just saying that this is what their idea was. Are there any other people who wish to make their comments or questions?
Sandy Barboza.
Hi. Hi. I just want to say that this is a good presentation, unlike the one that the, the woman who presented Corey Johnson's plan ran through. Didn't care whether we followed it or not. I just thank you, Tom, for, for speaking clearly and expressing, you know, what the problems are. You know, Corey, Corey Johnson, along with the mayor, rushed through the four borough jail plan. It was just an upzoning. They rushed it through Ulerp. And, and the attitude towards the community was that we're just in the way. And it was rubber stamped and, and as was brought out, the community board doesn't have any power. Because all the community boards opposed in the four boroughs where the jails are supposed to be located, opposed that plan, as well as the citizens of the city. Top-down is really what this is about. City, our city councilman votes for all of these development plans, these, these spot zonings. And even if it overthrows transitional zoning that in Borum Hill, we, you know, we worked hard to get, and I'm referring to 80 Flatbush, for example. The, I don't think Ulerp works for the community. I don't think we have a voice. This, this comprehensive plan, again, as Tom said, is top-down. And if there's a plan that doesn't include giving power to the community boards and funding to hire a planner full-time and doesn't include the community in the concept of a plan, we're in trouble. We're in more trouble than we're in now. Because they want to make it easier to do what they're doing now. The, this plan and the city council that gets, that gets donations from developers and special interest groups. So I hope I made some sense. I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Yeah, I, I, I can't agree with you more. I think the, there's, there's a mentality in the citywide office holders which look, look at neighborhoods and communities as instruments to be played on and not as active participants in a democratic process. And that, that is really the problem. The mayor's office organizes the prison plan and decides to take it through to the community boards and get it passed. It's backwards. And what is it going to take to change that mentality? Well, I think you did hit on one of the factors, which is that the real estate industry is the largest single funder of campaign finances. And they're interested in building. And they're interested in getting things through community boards and not having obstacles. They're not interested in the long-term future of the city. In fact, some of the long-term problems we're facing have to do with the fact that they were poorly regulated and were allowed to build, overbuild, and, and produce what we now have, which is a luxury housing glut. And, and a lack of housing for the people who need it the most.
Can I say something else?
Go ahead, Sandy.
Years ago, there was a plan when Bloomberg was mayor to develop, develop the waterfront, the whole waterfront with towers. So you see it in Williamsburg and, and here in Brooklyn Bridge Park. And they want to keep going, but this is, I mean, it was, it was scary to look at. The waterfront shouldn't be developed that way. And talk about long-term planning, now we're talking about flood zones, climate change. It's all developer-driven. The city is developer-driven. It's got to stop. And, and Corey Johnson is not our.
Words are precious. You recall, the city planning came to us last year with a plan for Dumbo, for development in Dumbo near the waterfront, and the plan was optional by developers. We voted it down because it needed to be mandatory. If we know that sea level rise is going to happen, we need to be prepared for it. Why should a developer be given an option of making the building waterproof? It should be mandatory. Your piece about Rikers Island was also, I have a slightly different approach to that. Rikers Island is inhumane and it must be closed. And the folks who are in there, many of whom should not be in there in the first place, should be closer to their family. Rikers Island, to go and visit anyone, you have to spend an entire day. That's a ridiculous institution for New York City to continue to operate under any circumstance. If you haven't been there, and I've gone there and visited, it's inhuman. It's absolutely inhuman. That needs to be closed. We have the jail in downtown Brooklyn. We made all of the modifications in the Ulerp to make the jail more appropriate for downtown Brooklyn. That process, as late as it, as it is, worked sort of well from my perspective because we did have an opportunity to react to it. And we believe that what we said was taken into account. At least that's what we were told at the meeting. So the process that's in place, it's not like it, it, it doesn't work at all. It almost doesn't work at all. But we do have an opportunity to make suggestions from time to time. I think we should look at how we can increase what we do. But this plan, I'm going to say it again, is not going to get us there. No one on this call is going to be around as it gets implemented. No one.
Yes.
Lindsay Ihon has her hand raised.
Please, go ahead, Lindsay.
Okay, thank you so much. So I, I guess I, what I'd love to see is to spend some of this time discussing the alternatives we would like to see. Apologies, my, I was making noise. So, and so I think what we've seen through the Ulerp process for the jail was that the community board was all in agreement that we all want to see Rikers closed, but it was the process and that top-down process that we, we didn't enjoy. And the same is true as we've all been discussing for planning together. And so while we have Professor Ngadi, I'm wondering if we could spend some time talking about what are the alternatives? What are the best practices for a community-inclusive planning process that we should be including in our response to planning together when the, when the city takes over? And I think that was a very productive use of time when we were looking at the Ulerp from the jail relocation to downtown Brooklyn. We really talked about, well, we're, we all want to see Rikers closed, but this is how we want to see it done. This is what we think a community-inclusive planning process would look like. Best way to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. And of course, just, you know, just bear in mind, much of the development, especially in here in Community Board Two, is as of right. So just always keep that in mind. But Professor, what, Lindsay has some good question for you. Is it, what, do you have an alternative?
Yes, that's actually the $64,000 question. What's the alternative process? But I would, I would underline process. So too often, what they're seeking at the citywide level in City Hall is the end result. Whether it's a development that has a big financial support, whether it's a major public work, whatever. But what's the process going to be? And this is, when I talked to actually some of the folks in the city council who, who, you know, wondering, why, why are you opposed to this, this thing? And I said, you know, it's all about producing a plan, but you have no process for getting there except for locking yourselves in a closet for a few years and coming up with three alternatives. And then taking it out to, on a roadshow to 59 community boards and pretending you're listening to what their comments are, writing it down, writing a report, and then taking it back and doing what you want to do anyway. So there has to be a process that's open, that allows for many voices to be heard, but also. that allows for many voices to be heard, but also is carefully structured enough that it's not a waste of time. I mean, I stopped going to public hearings anymore. Maybe some of you have had the same experience. You get two minutes or three minutes. And then the bell rings, you sit down. And by, and if you take the day out of work and you're the last one to speak, there's nobody in the room except the stenographer and you. So that's not a good process. That's a terrible process. Not just hearing. We don't want public hearings. We want public engagement, involvement. And guess what? Conflict. Conflict is part of it. Not everybody agrees with one another. So what? And the problem at City Hall is they want to have a discussion with you that just gives them the option of hearing or listening, but not engaging. Not really engaging with you and having a discussion. And I don't mean you individually. I mean you as a collective. And, and that's, you know, that, that's really at the heart of the problem. And it's, it's really building a civic culture. That, a civic democratic culture. And including everybody, which is another thing. So when you have public hearings during the day, when most people have to work, who's going to come?
Professor Ngadi, what's going to happen this meeting? How are you going to summarize what you heard tonight and share it with the relevant people in the city?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
How summarize what you heard tonight and make it meaningful and heard by appropriate people?
How would I summarize it? I would summarize it by saying I heard a lot of really tough questions and a need to have clear answers.
Can you include that they need to come out and talk with the community board to understand what we feel our needs are in the community before they put together a plan? And make them understand that each community is different. And maybe the city can come up with some overall needs and goals and send it out to the respective community boards to let them react to it. So that when they come with a plan, it actually means something to us.
Yes, and I, and I think it has to be an ongoing process. In other words, it's not just once every 10 years you get to listen to each of the 59 community boards. It has to be an ongoing process. It has to be a dialogue.
Well, you can't do a 10-year plan because conditions change from year to year. Or from month to month in community districts, too.
Yeah, the 10-year plan can change every year.
Can you ask Cory Johnson to come and meet with Community Board Two?
Sure.
We'd like to talk with him.
Sandy.
Yes, so I just want to point out, I was involved in the Hoyt Skirma Horn redevelopment project, urban renewal redevelopment. And it was built on, I think it's, it's finished now. It was built on urban renewal land. And the Boreham Hill community formed an open space committee because there were other encroachments, you know, that we were, that the community was, you know, fighting all the time. So we wanted to be proactive. And at the same time, Howard Golden called us in, he was the borough president at the time. And we formed a Hoyt Skirma Horn task force. This was before developers were involved. And we worked for, I don't know if it was a year or two years, I don't remember now. And our recommendations were in the RFP that went out to the developers. We worked with Empire State Development owned the land and they came to the meetings. We had a facilitator from Borough Hall. Elected officials were there, community board, the community board was representative. And that's, and that's, that should be a model. Because we didn't get everything, but we got, we got townhouses instead of luxury towers. You know, we, we got some, some higher buildings. We got, it was mandated to have 20% low-income, I know one, one of the sites, oh, yeah, we have the, what is it called? The Actors Fund has a building in the project. And then there's a big building that has 20, 30, 50, no, wait. Yes, 20, 30, 50, you know, residential. But that's the only way it should be done in a democracy. You know, no, I mean, nobody feels there shouldn't be any development, but as we said in, in Atlantic Yards, develop, don't destroy. And then as Tom is pointing out, there has to be a long-term plan. It can't just be tear this down so a developer can make money and there's no, there's no plan involved. I don't think we're in a good place and I don't think Cory Johnson's plan is good. And I would love to see the Hoyt Skirma Horn model where the, where the community is involved in the beginning.
Again, thank you, Sandy. I think you have some very good ideas, very, these are some very interesting way. I do have some memories of that, the early work on that of by Hoyt Skirma Horn. And I think it did turn out better than one would have expected, given all the, I guess, forces that were in play. I know, are there any other comments or questions from other people that who have not really spoken? I don't see any raised hand. Host, who's hosting? Anybody, do I have anybody else that wishes to speak? Carolyn, do we have anybody else?
I don't see any other raised hands.
Okay. Professor, you have any closing comments?
Other issue I need to discuss, I need to present a professor, we have negotiated elevators, ADA compliance in several buildings downtown Brooklyn, where the developer has installed the elevator that goes to the platform of the train station. The MTA has not installed the second elevator that goes from the mezzanine down to the actual train platform. So you can get from the building elevator down to the mezzanine of the train station with your elevator, and then you get to the actual platform because the MTA support put in their portion of the elevator. There's no plan for that. ADA compliance is no ADA compliance.
Well, the MTA has a long way to go on ADA compliance and and the MTA is another planning issue because they do, they operate outside of city jurisdiction. And why should they?
That, while, while that's true, we are dealing with a population that has to be serviced. They don't look at the MTA as being different from the city. They need to get down to the train platform. If the MTA is responsible and it's a state agency, we need to have a better relationship so that the MTA comes in and works in conjunction with the city to provide the necessary services to the population. That's part of the issue that we're talking about here. We can't use, and part of the issue in the city, Professor Ngadi, is that the different agencies don't communicate with each other. So we have that issue in many different regards downtown Brooklyn. We hear something from one agency, the other agency that needs to support it doesn't know anything about it. So how do we get all of them to work together to understand that this is one city and we have to provide services to the entire population in a, in a, in a better sense?
Problem, I'll just throw my two cents in on to say the problem that we face with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority is that it's a state agency. And the governor is really the main person who's behind it, who has the power. We've seen it on several occasions and that's one of the big problems that we have. I'll just point out also that coming this Wednesday at the general meeting, I'll be speaking and asking the board about the MTA's accessibility, zoning accessibility proposal, which the Landmark Land Use Committee did have a vote on. And will be, I'll be presenting that this coming Wednesday at 6:00. But Professor, I don't know if you have any other comments on the problems we're facing dealing with state agencies like the MTA? Well, I'll just make one quick comment. I think the transportation issues are behind a lot of the city, the interest in the city council. Certainly Cory Johnson has been vocal about this. The need to improve the infrastructure for pedestrians, bicyclists, to solve the problems of, of street congestion and so forth. And, and planning is one of the, one of the best things that is not being done. And the Department of Transportation, again, the city Department of Transportation is, has its shortcomings in this regard. Not so much because they don't have the technical ability, but they face opposition from many community boards parts of community boards enough to throw a wrench into the proposal, say, for a bicycle lane. And, and so I know, because I've worked with DOT folks a lot over the years, I'm a long-time bicycle advocate and a bicyclist. But we did the 19, in 1994, we did the Bicycle Master Plan. For the city. And it has not been implemented yet. So why? And you have to look at the Department of Transportation, their inability to engage communities. And not just community boards, communities. Communities that depend on different modes of transportation. And, and to integrate with the MTA, which is, yes, it's a state agency. But that state agency brings millions of passengers every day onto the streets without providing, helping to provide the bicycle infrastructure, a better integration of pedestrian infrastructure on the street with the subways. So I, I think there's a, a long way to go in transportation. I think that's one of the, the major reasons why we need long-term planning. And, and community-based planning. Because unless there's community-based planning, individual parts of communities are going to be against everything. Just as they can be for, for the right thing. The problem is the process, the process, there is no process. It's, the process is DOT comes up with a, a plan that the city council person says, oh, we want to extend the bicycle lane down four blocks or six blocks or whatever it is. And immediately, there's an explosion and there's opposition and everything. But it's not part of a long-term plan that people understand and have bought into. So what do you expect?
Well, we are dealing with that right now because we are told that we have to put a bicycle lane on the Brooklyn Bridge. In order for that bike, bicycle lane to be completed effectively, 600 cars, up to 600 cars an hour have to be redirected from the BQE, from direct access to the Brooklyn Bridge, now have to go through the community of Fort Greene. So the community of Fort Greene is expected to sustain all of the BQE traffic that wants to exit at Tillery Street to the Brooklyn Bridge. Go through Fort Greene and take that back exit. Because we have to create a bike exit on Tillery Street. How is that fair to the Fort Greene community?
Right.
Community with the highest asthma rate in the city because it's adjacent to the BQE. So we're going to surround the whole community with more car traffic.
Well, as you know, the BQA is a bigger problem.
We don't even talk about that.
That's right.
The state got, got tired, realized they couldn't do it, so they gave it to the state. So we went from the frying pan into the fire. No one's ever done a, a triple cantilever and certainly not in a fully operational community. So it's not going anywhere. Nobody knows what to do with it. Professor, you want to solve that problem?
Well, you know, you've got to tolerate some bold proposals, like tearing down the BQE. BQE is a Robert Moses creation in a different era. It's one of the busiest thoroughfares in the city. And it doesn't, it, it isn't, it doesn't have the capacity to deal with the existing volumes of traffic. Well, we have public transit. We have a public transportation. But that's another problem the MTA hasn't figured out yet. Is how to, how to plan a modern bus system to meet the needs. Because we could have buses taking up a portion of that, the need with a, with a scaled-down BQE. I mean, there's all kinds of problems with the Gowanus Expressway, which is the extension of the BQ, which is part of the BQE. Dividing the Sunset Park community from the waterfront. People have been talking about tearing it down for years. And the Regional Plan Association even has a proposal to build a tunnel. But we can't think long-term and on a large scale. And because it's too big of a capital item for any mayor to conceive of. But there are a lot of ways of working around these things that if you have a serious discussion, you'll come up with solutions. And, and, you know, I, I agree with Sandy said about the waterfront. The, the whole way that you got a highway parallel to a waterfront, one of the most important assets in the city, it doesn't make any sense. It made sense to Robert Moses because he wanted people to go from Queens and Brooklyn out to Long Island. And that's, that's what it was built for. But we can think differently. And the Staten Island, you know, and the trucks. I mean, we, we messed up so many opportunities to I mean, we, we, we messed up so many opportunities uh to uh, to build the uh rail ferry from um New Jersey to uh Sunset Park. To build that rail link that has been provoked, proposed forever and is never gonna happen. Well, it would have relieved the traffic on the BQE enormously. It would have cut down on the truck traffic, which is one of the biggest safety problems. So uh, yeah, it just um, you know, we're, we're looking at an accumulation of planning mishaps.
Don't forget about the beach next to the book Queens Connector, that's on a drawing board.
Well, my fantasy project was always to have some kind of rail connection going from Brooklyn through Staten Island and into New Jersey, which would accommodate both freight and passenger service. That will never happen. Are there any other comments from any, anybody, especially from people who have not participated yet? Questions from people who have not participated yet? If not, then Professor Thompson-Gotti, I thank you very much for your thoughts and uh, the ideas and giving us guidance, especially on this very complex uh proposal that came out of Speaker Corey Johnson's office. There'll be, I understand there's no voting on it, but from us, but we certainly at least be able to, be able to address these issues as they come up, I think, more competently and more clearly. And if there's nothing else, uh, like I said, we have the next, I guess our next board's meeting is coming up this Wednesday. And I think then the, then our, of course, our Landmark Land Use Committee will also have a, have our usual meeting coming up. Like we have some big stuff coming up on the following Wednesday. So I guess, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you. Good day.